Good morning. The time is now 9:35 and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of January 14th, 2020 is called to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and order of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda?
Chair.
Yes.
I understand that there may be a resolution coming up and I think that it's important that we put it on the agenda. It should be on the agenda well before today in case the public wants to weigh in on it or wants to email us or wants to come and give public comment after lunch. But that wasn't done, so at the very least, I think it should be added now. So at least there's some warning.
Fair enough. And this is the, just for clarification, Mr. McMillan, that it is a resolution on?
Driver's license. I don't know if it's going to be brought up, but that's what I'm understanding it might be. Instead of surprising the public, we should let them know.
Fair enough. So Mr. McMillan makes reference to the resolution on licenses for all. Do I have any objection?
Well, I don't actually want, to make it clear, I don't want to put it on. I don't really think we should be dealing with it, but I understand it may be. And if it is, then I would hope that those intending to would put it on the agenda.
Fair enough. Could I have a motion to put that resolution on the agenda? Their motion to put the resolution on Drive Safe on the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Pritchett, seconded by Ms. Fecto. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Neat.
Eyes have it. Any other additions or deletions from the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it. I'm sorry?
Do we have an actual motion?
I have a motion to approve the amended agenda. Moved by Dr. Pugh, second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Albrecht, all in favor?
Aye.
That's a skinny aye, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it.
You're abstaining on the second one?
On both.
Okay.
Fair enough. This time Marilyn will introduce the members of the State Board of Education.
Okay. Hello, I'm Marilyn Schneider. I'm the State Board Executive. You've just been listening to the State Superintendent, who serves as chairperson of the Board, Dr. Michael Rice. As we go around the table to the left, the Board's President is Dr. Cassandra Albrecht. She resides in Dearborn. Next to her is the Board's Vice President, Dr. Pamela Pugh. She resides in Saginaw. The Board's Secretary is Ms. Michelle Fecto residing in Detroit. Nikki Snyder is a member of the Board and she resides in Dexter. Next to her is the Board's NASB delegate, Ms. Tiffany Tilly, and she resides in Southfield. Next to her, Carol Lawheed. She's a teacher, this year's Michigan Teacher of the Year. When she's not here, she's teaching in Rochester Community Schools at Stony Creek High School. Across the table, we welcome Brandy Johnson, who's representing the Governor, Gretchen Whitmer. The Governor holds an ex officio seat on the State Board of Education and Brandy Johnson will be representing the Governor in that seat forthcoming. She's the Policy Advisor for Post-Secondary Education and Workforce Development. Next to her, Board Member Judy Pritchett from Washington Township. Next to her, Board Member Lupe Ramos Montini from Grand Rapids. Next to me, Mr. Thomas McMillan. He is the Board's Treasurer and he is from Oakland Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Dr. Kiesler, I believe you have new employees to introduce?
Thank you. Good morning. I am excited to be able to introduce, I'm going to start with Marissa Vasquez from the Office of Educational Support. Can you tell us just about what you do and a little bit about yourself?
Yeah. My name is Marissa Vasquez. I work in the Office of Educational Support. I'm a Secretary in the Special Populations Unit. I support our manager, Michelle Williams, in many ways. Meeting minutes, upcoming conferences. I had this as my first state position, so I've been blessed with a great supportive team, all the education consultants. As well as Michelle Williams herself, I've been very supportive in getting me caught up to date on all of the state practice teachers. So, I'm very pleased to hear that.
Next, we have Melissa Manco, also in the Office of Educational Support, but a different part. Melissa, tell us a little about her.
Good morning. I'm Melissa Manco. I hail from Oakland Public Schools. I did 18 years in the classroom, both general ed, special education, and public Montessori. I also did some time with Inglewood School District as an RTI coach. I am now a literacy consultant for the state and it is also my first state job. I'm doing lots of literacy model research. I'm doing lots of read-by-grade-three communication and outreach efforts. And I work under Brandy Boogby and with the other consultants that are adding on. So I'm very excited to be here and do the work.
Thank you. And last, but not least, we have Ashley Aris from our Office of Systems Evaluation and Technology.
Hi, my name is Ashley Aris. I work in the Department of Education. I work at...
Did we miss any new employees who are in the room? Okay, seeing none, thank you and welcome. If you plan to offer public comment during today's meeting, please complete a form and get it to Marilyn. Forms are available on the table just outside the boardroom and must be submitted prior to the beginning of the portion of the meeting devoted to public comment. Public comment will begin immediately after the lunch break at approximately 1:00 PM today. Please be here at that time to ensure you have an opportunity to comment. First item on the committee of the whole agenda is a presentation by Xavier DeGroot Autism Foundation. The mission of the Xavier DeGroot Autism Foundation is to create and promote opportunities for people with autism through advocacy, education, economic opportunities, and humanitarian efforts. The focus is on achieving economic, social, and political equality. Welcome to Mr. Xavier DeGroot, Chief Executive Officer and Founder of the Xavier DeGroot Autism Foundation. This presentation is informational and requires no board action. Mr. DeGroot, welcome.
Thank you. I would like to have a draft of an autism proclamation sometime before April Autism Month, because it's important that we raise awareness throughout the education system that we have, because there's several resources that are not provided in a lot of school districts that there should be. For example, one is, I think we should build sensory rooms and I'm interested in fundraising money towards that with my foundation. I've talked with Tony Hawk, the skateboarder, to have a fundraiser in Detroit here one of these days, to have a Detroit Public School District, to have an autism sensory room built throughout their school systems, so the person with autism can teach themselves. And rather than always the formal education side of things, it's important that the person with autism gets alone time, so they can go through their own interests and then make their own mind, be able to focus on what they are able to do, rather than focusing on their disability at all stances. Because sometimes special education was a target to me when I was in high school, telling me that I need to focus on my disability, not my ability. But my ability was Stephen Hawking and science, because I liked reading about stars and the universe. And it's appeared that when I wanted to take physics, or when I want to take algebra, which is complicated, I know most people feel like, but at the end of the day, it's very fundamental and a person with autism may have the savant skills and you don't even see it until last minute, like Rain Man in the movie, for instance. And so throughout the school department, I would also like to ask for there to be one day, a chance to have a better quality, looked in structural education system by having people with autism rather than just special education. We put them into the library in the schools and perhaps think about creating a seminar throughout the library, which I would be dedicated to start off with. What that would do is peek around at books and whether it is art, whatever, they are interested in the person on the autism spectrum. And then they go back to the special ed program and kind of that would help them communicate through the special ed person more appropriately at a chance of them looking at things and pictures, like Dr. Temple Grandin would do back in the old days. And she is an expert in that. And it appears that that's a way to better understand one another, rather than having the cognitive behavioral problems that a person with autism has when they're trying to deal with a teacher, explain things to them that is not fully explainable all the time. But I know what I want to say at times, but I don't know always that. I can give you my full cognition and skills at knowing what I want to say, because there has been a dilemma in the brain functionality of autism called slower copy and paste skills that an English professor at Oxford University had studied. And I thought that would be something to bring up here, so we can start programs one of these days with all of you. And Pam Mala Pugh, she brought me here and she's been a friend of mine, so I would like to thank her. And I would like her to be my resource through all of you to one day have a program for autism. And April's Autism Month, so let's think about setting such a thing like that up. It would be a blessing if we could maybe also include you all to come to my June 20th event here in Lansing. We're possibly going to have it at Lansing Center, but it'll be posted here in a couple of weeks with Dr. Temple Grandin. And we're going to have Cody Lee perform from American Got Talent, who has autism and is blind. And I thought that would be an interesting educational function to have you all at, if you would like. And is there any questions I could answer for any of you? Or anything thoughts that I could maybe help with through my Autism Foundation to better help advise you all? Because I might be interested in doing whatever I can.
Okay, very good. Dr. Pugh, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you for coming to present. And I've learned so much from Xavier. You can talk about, I mean, you have been such a champion around this issue, from the White House, you've met with everyone. If you ever go to his foundation page, you will see all the people that he has worked with across the aisle. But if you could talk a little bit about your policing autism work, which you kicked off last April?
Yes. Here in the state of Michigan, I have a bill that has been unanimously voted on in the Senate side. Now, it's currently in the House, the Reps' side, and I testify for it on January 21st next week, on Tuesday, at 10:30 through 11:30. And we'll have sheriffs and police officers from all over state coming to support the bill. It would be allowing police officers to detect that you have autism before they come at your door to you by typing the code in. And they would be required, if they find out that you have autism, after the code is typed into their system, to turn the light sirens and the sound to a lower frequency, so that way the person with autism doesn't feel like overstimulated and sensitive. But on top of that, there will be a card in their pocket that will have signs and symptoms of autism. And in the back of it will be approaching skills between the police and the person with autism, so that way the police doesn't look so intense at them and gives them a little bit distance when they go after them. And they give them about a few extra seconds or minutes, however you want to put it, for them to understand, what do I have to get, insurance card? I don't know what the insurance card looks like. I have a lot of things in my car here and I'm lost. Give me a second, please. That will allow the person with autism to have more time. And plus, we want to make sure that if they feel they need to call their parents, if they needed clarification or accommodation and that sort, that the police will give them the moment to do that, rather than thinking that they're trying to escape from the police and hide things from them. That is one target that goes on and on today with police, I think, to be changed for people with autism.
Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing that. And Dr. Pugh, thank you for your comments as well. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Mr. DeGroot, for your attendance and your work. I'm not all that familiar with it, but certainly intend to become more familiar with it. I liked your comment regarding, you know, schools, basically agreeing with Dr. Young Zhao, who I really like. I don't know if you're familiar with him, but he talks about how we really need schools to enhance the strengths of students instead of trying to fix them. And so I really, really appreciate that. I think that, you know, when you suggest a program for autism, I don't know that I'd want to do a top-down impose it, but I do think there are ways that we could come up with sample programs and recommend them to local districts. I'd prefer it to be done at the local level. But I also think at the state level, what we can do is kind of reduce, allow more flexibility, so we can reduce standards in a way that would allow more flexibility at the local level to implement things like what you're talking about. So I do think there can be things done here at the state level to assist what you're trying to do. And I agree, there's, people would talk about disabilities, but I really think that there is very strong scientific evidence that there's so many skills and abilities of people that we currently say have disabilities. It's, they're tremendously talented and it just is that when our education system tries to squeeze them into the same mold as everybody else, it can be very harmful and not very productive. So I welcome what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Fecto?
Yeah, it's an honor to meet you. Pam has talked to me about you and she's probably told you I have an adult son with autism. I'm also on the Board of the Autism Alliance and so I really appreciate you bringing this to light and all the work that you're doing. There's so many people who benefit from it. I also was, you know, if there's any way I can support you and work with you. I live in Detroit, that you're working with in Detroit. And I've met Temple Grandin and I've talked to her and she told me how important it was for her. She grew up in a rural area, which is why she works with cattle now. But what was key to her success in school was that her teacher was forward-thinking enough to build a space for her where they could, you know, I think you said it was a shower curtain, where she could just be alone and sort of decompress, like you're saying, these sensory rooms, so she could just take a breath and, you know, get her thoughts together. And, I mean, I think I needed sensory room itself. I think we could all use a sensory room. But that was the key to her. Now she has a PhD and she's quite successful and so, anyway, I'm wondering if you're coordinating with any other organizations? I know that there was some work done on policing. Every day I read about someone with autism or some other disability being misunderstood and shot, their motives being misunderstood. So educating police officers. So I'm just wondering, are you working with any other groups and how large your coalition is?
I am, in fact. One that I work with very frequently is L. Center for Autism in Florida.
Okay.
And I also worked in the past with Autism Speaks.
Uh huh.
And I've worked with the Disability Rights Coalition of Michigan.
Okay.
We've had things like the celebration of the 25th anniversary of the Americans Disability Act. And who joined me in that? Anthony Iani and Richard Bernstein. And we've also had coordinations to have educational programs down in Florida with Damarino Foundation for Autism, his son has autism, and the Miami Dolphins now does a educational function on how better diet, food products on autism, because of like, there's things studied that has not been 100% proven yet, but it's thought of about how certain caffeine items, caffeine and your gluten products, on autism. And they're trying to research that through the Jack Nicklaus hospitals down there for autism. But my money I fundraised goes more not towards research, but towards social programs and police and government affairs things, so we can get policy change or so we can get things like new educational cards on law enforcement and firefighters out there. And certainly I would like to help any way I can with you in Detroit. In Detroit, when I have my event down there, you're welcome to come and certainly bring other people you know in the community. I would prefer that sometimes in this world, the way business runs is we think about, how can we all get together and partner for a rally or such thing like that? But it doesn't always turn out to be so easy when there is, I see too many people in this world have greediness and have, oh, they always searching for their own identity, like Burger King versus McDonald's conflict. And I see that with foundations too. Temple Grandin will say the same thing. She says, I don't want to get involved with some foundation like Jenny McCarthy's because of vaccine. I don't want to get involved with certain other things that Autism Speaks is doing. Beyond that, I support them in other ways. So there's always some disagreements.
Yeah, yeah. I agree, yeah.
But, and I would like you to maybe help with, anyway, you know what Jim, Jack's Place for Autism is?
Yep.
Kurt Gibson at the Tigers has a radio station. They do autism with Jim Price is his name. And maybe you can coordinate with me a way to have a side booth through, for the community of Detroit, to have a program be fundraised and set up down there. And that would be a good way to pre-advertise for building a sensory room through the Detroit Public Schools. And I need to meet their superintendent, whoever that is, so I can get them to bring kids from their school district to my Tony Hawk Skateboard Event.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fecto. Any other comments, questions, thoughts? Ms. Schneider?
Just to confirm, Xavier, you did make a specific ask about a draft for autism proclamation in April, correct? That was a...
Yes. Particularly how I want that done is I would like to have, if there's like any room around here where we could have like a one-hour time, so I can include some students particularly around this area that have autism, including Anthony Iani, to come and motivationally talk about issues and things that can be more solvable through autism. I'll do my research and have it printed out for you. It'd be a way to present the proclamation that moment and that time, but we can create a seminar out of this as well. And I want to bring Governor there. And is it Brandy that works for the Governor? I would like to also ask her, Andrea Cascarilla agrees referencing me to have her do a proclamation. Last year, I know she did the Equal Pay Day on April 2nd, and I was like, what? That's Autism Day 2 internationally by United Nations. And I know she supports it and I look forward to having her in my bill signing. Lieutenant Gilchrist already told me we love the idea. And if you could help getting her to do a proclamation and if she can come for a quick second, just to do a quick comment that day at this seminar we'll have, or we can have lieutenant substitute and come over too. That'd be great to help bring awareness and I'll press release that with Sherri Jones and local people in areas like Tim Skubik. And we can see about having on the proclamation to recognize April is National Autism Month, April 2nd is International Autism Day, and on the where areas, whereas we talk about how the school district is glad to make sure that Xavier DeGroot Autism Foundation is dedicated to getting what other school districts, so we can have partnership, rather than trying to always argue over things as autism is a bipartisan, nonpartisan issue. It'd be something that I would be willing to use my funds towards building sensory rooms. And that you're in support of that, I'm assuming? And will this recognize autism, awareness, importance of it?
We appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Schneider, for that presentation. And we'll work on the, we'll work on the resolution with you. We'll get that in place long before April. We appreciate you sharing your abilities with us today. Thank you so much.
No problem. I brought cards. Yeah, one, two. Might be missing one. Marilyn has my contact.
Okay, I'd be happy to help you with the proclamation.
Thank you very much, Mr. DeGroot.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. The next item on the committee of the whole agenda is the presentation by robotics teams. Michigan has many highly successful robotics teams today. We welcome the Grizzly Robotics from Ypsilanti Community Schools, the Techno Dogs from Brighton Area Schools, and the Thunder Chickens from Utica Community Schools. I can tell that there was some fun putting together those names. The students will tell you how FIRST Robotics has affected their lives by highlighting their successes, unique qualities, and diverse experiences. This presentation is informational and requires no board action. Our presenters, Dr. Vanessa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent of Educator, Student and School Supports, Janay Gonzalez, student at Ypsilanti Community Schools STEM Middle College Program, Amanda Whitley, student at Brighton Area Schools, and Angel Najjar, student at Utica Academy for International Studies, Utica Community Schools. There'll be a PowerPoint, I understand, and a video clip. Welcome.
Thank you.
Well, good morning. Thank you for having us, everybody. I'm Janay Gonzalez. I'm from Team 66 and I'm in the fifth year in the STEM Middle College Program.
I'm Angel Najjar. I'm from Team 217, the Thunder Chickens.
I'm Amanda Whitley and I'm from Team 3707 from Brighton. And we were on the winning alliance for the past 2019 season and I'm a senior in high school.
Right, so can we just...
Yeah.
So we want to talk a little bit about FIRST Robotics competitions. Our teams design, build, and program robots. And not only that, but we also attract different students with different varieties of interest. Through this program, we're able to help students excel in math, science, and English. And our school, the STEM Middle College, actually incorporates FIRST principles into our school, which is mentor-based approach, experiential learning, and strategic community engagement. We created an entire school revolving around these principles and we get college credits through it as well. We're hands-on with what we do in our classes. We go and present to different people about what our robotics program is about and what our school does for our students.
And through this, through all the experience in high school, we're more prepared to go into college and our further fields, especially in STEM. We've had students from my team specifically go on to Stanford, work for NASA and different large corporations, and not only better their future, but then come back to mentor for our future as well. And FIRST not only helps out with our future in college and just career readiness, but it also helps with scholarships and different ways to apply for certain grants. Last year, FIRST gave about $81 million in scholarships alone, which is a large amount of help, especially considering how many students are involved in FIRST.
Michigan actually has the most FRC teams, just saying. Yes. And actually, because of how impactful FIRST is in the, for robotics, we've had, my team specifically has had five generations of alumni come back and mentor our students. And it's amazing to see them, like, they were students once participating in the same programs. We were building, you know, programming and they come back and mentor us about it. So five generations is pretty awesome.
And not only are the students prepared for college, but they also get to build like their own confidence and skills that can help them. For example, I just alone came into my team not really knowing what the difference between like a wrench and a hammer was. And then I got to go on to build sub-assemblies and leading my team and I'm the CEO of my team. So you can go from not knowing anything to going, to running the entire team and having a bright future. And it's a lot more than robots. We don't just work on learning within our team, but we go out and help people around the world and around the country and around our area alone as well. We volunteer constantly. We're always going out. People reach out to ask, because we're a large team and many of us have larger teams. So we're going out into our community and helping them as well. My team hosts Thunder Quest, which is a competition, one of the biggest ones in Michigan, for FTC, FLL, and FLL Junior, which are the elementary, kindergarten, as well as junior high levels of robotics. And thousands of people attend. The children are so inspired and they help inspire us as well to continue on and they, other two teams also get involved.
So through my team, we're trying to emphasize that leadership and teamwork through our team in general. So one of the ways that we did this was we went to girls' competitions. This was our first year, going to a women's competition. And it really encouraged our women on the team, which was around, I'd say, 20% last year. And it encouraged them to get involved in spots that we haven't really been part of before. So an example of that is the men were supposed to be like the mentors, kind of, the men counterparts on our team. So they kind of had a different aspect in the competition as well. So they taught us how to do all these different things to fix the robot. And we kind of had a learning curve with that, which was awesome.
And, uh, like, uh, Angel mentioned, we also traveled like across the country. My team went to China to mentor students on how to build robots. And we raised $56,000 in six weeks. And our students have never even, the students in our, um, in my program, they're not really, like, they don't have this type of opportunities often. They've never even been, most of them haven't even been out of Michigan. So to have the opportunity to go mentor another team in a different country with language barriers has been, was amazing. It's absolutely crazy.
Okay, so one of the things that is different about like the FIRST program versus all the different varsity organizations in the school is the opportunity to reach out and raise your own funds. So, um, this is across the whole entire FIRST program. But we have to, um, to have a successful team, we have to go out into the community and find those different funds that we need to support our team. So, we do this through corporate and local sponsors. Um, one of our corporate sponsors, it's kind of a smaller one, is Abersbaker, which is housed in Brighton and in Germany. And they have, um, they have given us tours of their facilities. They have come and worked with us at our facilities. And they have also held three-hour design reviews with us. And their CEO is housed in Germany. And he did a quick little, um, visit to the United States for his, for his company. And during that time, he took his time and went to our team and kind of had a celebratory time with us as well, which is awesome. And when he was in Germany, he actually streamed halfway across the world at competitions, which was kind of cool to hear. Um, one of our local sponsors, Promess, also offers us different internship opportunities. So, from FIRST Robotics, we come through with some skilled students. And they see that and they also want to open their employee pool. So, we kind of have that partnership, um, gaining some experience and gaining some employee and skilled student opportunities. And lastly, our school is super supportive. Actually, our school started FIRST Robotics about eight years ago. And, well, not FIRST Robotics, but our team. We started it eight years ago because we got an email from FIRST and FIRST in Michigan that offered us a grant to start a team and to get us involved in FIRST Robotics. And I would say that has really stretched our school so far. Um, now our school is using us for an example to emphasize STEM in our community. So, we just passed a new bond in our community to have a STEM center and to incorporate that in all levels. So, it's really cool what we can do. So, cooperation, which, um, is a term coined by FIRST, is the combination of cooperation and competition. And that's really highlighted throughout all different times of FIRST. So, at competitions, one of the things that we do is we really help each other in the pits, which is like our, um, our, our stop, our stop points like in a NASCAR track race, you know, where you repair. And I know one time there was a rookie team, which is the first-year team. And they thought the competition was, oh, you build it at the competition and then compete it. So we helped them build the whole robot and program it. And that was really cool to build that type of network. But also, um, our team wanted to highlight, um, the importance of keeping that year round. So, last year in the 2018 season, we started an LCRA, which is the Livingston County Robotics Alliance. And that really emphasized, um, the importance of teamwork. So, we have different, um, members of our community. So we have seven teams that come together and we work on community events and outreach. Or we work and teach less experienced members about different parts of engineering. And it's really incredible.
And through cor- cor- cooperation?
You get the phrase.
Yeah. Uh, we're able to work with teams around the world. For example, the picture in the middle shows, uh, my team as well as Amanda's team. And then a team from the Netherlands, which is the first team, first time that a team competed from Europe and actually ended up winning the world championship. We got to work on the same alliance. We had their Netherlands flag on our face. Uh, we still talk to them to this day. We are always in contact. And if it weren't through FIRST Robotics, we couldn't, we wouldn't be able to say that we are friends across the world. And they've taught us a lot as well. For example, they have different ways of doing things than we do. And through that, we're able to build a better robot. And on to the left, you can see our, my team's robot from the first time that we bagged it, after we had the six weeks to build it. And at the end of the season, it looked completely different. We had a different arm, a different intake, um, a different, um, type of ladder mechanism to move the elevator up. So, you can really go far between six weeks and then through the competition season.
So, I want to quickly highlight how it impacts each of us personally. So Janay and Angel have their own kind of interpretation of how it impacted them. But for me, it really impacted where it was going. So, I was planning on going into a science field, but wasn't really considering engineering because both of my parents were engineers. And I was like, no, it's not going to happen. I'm not going to follow the same path. But really, it took me about five years to join robotics. And when I did, which was last year, I completely fell in love with it. And it learned, it taught me, um, the constant innovation that happens in engineering. And it really gave me that heart for it. So, to, so at the end of the year, I applied to be the CEO as well for my team. And through all of that, I learned the best way to understand everybody was if I learned a little bit about everyone. So I was able to learn programming and electrical, mechanical, all of that. And it really widened my ranges and really made me interested in my field.
Yeah, and for me personally, like I said before, I came in with very little knowledge. I also did not even care about the engineering field. I thought it was cool for other people, not me. I was more interested in law. But I went into the team with an open mindset my freshman year and ended up just hiding in the background. But then every year progressively getting more involved, to the point where last year I was actually on the field, um, which was the most amazing experience I've ever had. It made me want to push myself further and get more involved with organizations like FIRST. And it's not only helping me, not only helped me decide where I want to go for college, it also helped me with scholarships and deciding what I want to do with my future and continue with something that I truly love. And just going to where we work at every day and hearing from our sponsors is beyond inspiring.
Because of my involvement with FIRST, I've been able to travel the world. I've been able to present in front of people and I love it. I love being able to talk about what we do and how we're impacting others. Um, I'm the oldest of six kids, so I have, like, high expectations. Um, I'm going to be the first in my family to graduate. And I'm thinking about going to biomedical engineering. And I'm currently in a five-year program. And I should be graduating with my associates in health and science this semester. So I'm really looking forward to what the, what the future has in hold for me. Yep, and engineering has, uh, FIRST Robotics had a lot to do with, uh, why I wanted to get into biomedical engineering.
Thank you guys so much.
And we also have the, the short video. So we also present like, um, the chairman's award. It's the most prestigious award you can earn in FIRST Robotics. And this is, um, from my team's video. And this is going to kind of show more about what we do and what my team's about.
Grizzly Robotics is.
A way to see the world.
A college readiness program.
We are.
FIRST.
Community leaders.
Global scholars.
I moved around a lot. I went through being homeless. So I'm just really lucky to be where I am now.
At Grizzly Robotics, we incorporate FIRST principles into everything we do so we can maximize our impact on our students, break the generational cycle of poverty, and develop a culture that celebrates STEM. We reinvented education by starting the Ypsilanti STEM and Manufacturing Middle College, where we incorporate FIRST into every classroom, where our teachers act more like mentors coaching us through failure, and where all of our 220 students build and program robots as a part of our normal school day. FIRST is the reason over 500 students have enrolled in the STEM Middle College and why our graduation rate has increased from 69% to 97%.
Grizzly Robotics has changed my life by sort of guiding me. And here I am now with 49 college credits and making change. I'm actually mentoring other teams' mentors with programming.
I had a, I had a mentor that, you know, really pushed me to, to make my life better. And so that, that was big for me because I, I don't really have people like that in my life. So I want to change that and show like my little brother and the people, and all the kids he had around, that, you know, we can do things, you know, everybody can do it. If I didn't have this STEM program, I don't think I would be where I'm at right now. I don't think I would have a three-year body. I don't think I would have a certificate engineering. I don't think I would have went to China or been on HBO. It makes me very proud that this program was found so it can change student lives like mine is. People don't have the things that I struggled with. We had my freshman year from my grades, like, I was not like thinking anything about college. Now I'm not the one with the choice of colleges I want to go to joining FIRST Robotics. Just, that was the thing. That, that was what helped me become who I am right now.
At Grizzly Robotics, we're maximizing our impact on students by using FIRST and STEM Middle College. We're maximizing our impact in the community by building a robotic center that will support the entire FIRST ecosystem. And we are maximizing our impact on the world by sharing our scalable FIRST educational model.
We.
Are successful, are family.
Are first-generation college students. Grizzly Robotics.
Is changing the world.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Do you have, um, people in the audience that you'd like to recognize? Teachers, sponsors, coaches, others?
Yes, um, Mr. Scott Huster is the one who actually, um, created our STEM Middle College program. And he's the reason why we have these opportunities right now. Because he loved what FIRST was about. And he's the reason why I'm also getting all these college credits and applying to colleges too.
That's true. Let's give it up for him. There are others in the audience you'd like to recognize?
Yeah, for me, I have Mr. Bill Beti as well as Mr. Paul Casada. They both help, uh, inspire all of my teammates and I every single day. They've been with our team from the very beginning. We've been a team since 1999. Uh, they're constantly supporting us and helping us figure out ways and mentoring us in the best ways they can. And they have inspired me to go to where I am today.
That's true. Let's give it up for them. Anyone you'd like to?
Yep, so I have, um, my coach, Mr. Nick Sikma back here, and my mom, Mary Margaret Whitley. And they're both mentors with our team and they've been here for a really long time. Um, Nick actually doesn't have any students on the team. He just got involved and it's been really impactful for all of us. And then I have my fellow student over here, Erin Lask. And he's also the other co-captain with me. And I've known him since first grade, so it's really brought us closer together.
Thank you very much. Board members, any comments or questions? President Albridge?
Uh, so first of all, thank you very much for coming to, uh, to present to us today. It's, it's always enlightening for us when we can see the, the results of the policy decisions that we make here. Sometimes you don't get to see the real-world, uh, result of that. So it's always, it's, it's a real treat for us when we can do that. I was just curious, you know, you, you talked about being the early college program and you guys talked about those colleges you're looking at. Can you share where you're getting your college, uh, credits from? Uh, and then where, where are you guys thinking about going next?
So, um, we're partnered with Washtenaw Community College. And our students, um, are required to take a list, at least 15 college credits. Um, and I'm planning on applying to University of Michigan, EMU. And there's like a ton of colleges that I'm applying to right now. So I'm just kind of like waiting.
I plan on going to Kettering University this, they start in the summer. And, uh, my co-op is most likely going to be with either BAE Systems or McNodd and McKay, which are both great engineering.
And then I am most interested in University of Michigan and Purdue. Um, I applied for both of the engineering programs in there. I got into U of M, but, um, Purdue's is released all tomorrow, so we'll find out then. But I'm planning to go into, I don't remember what I decided on. Oh, biomedical engineering. I've changed it so many times, so.
Thank you. Good luck, um, tomorrow. Other questions, comments? Ms. Snyder?
We probably have lots of fans, but I think one of your biggest fans reached out to me and said, hey, they'll be coming and presenting. And just correct me if I rung, but he said that there was over 3,000 teams that competed worldwide, worldwide. Top 400-plus teams came to Detroit for a three-day, and you guys were number one. That's incredible.
That's awesome, yeah.
It was the best experience I've ever had.
Awesome.
It's intense. It's not just like, just robots, like you would think, like, yeah, it's like football down in the.
Yeah, like. We, uh, played at Ford Field for the final matches. Like, when you're down there is the most intense situation I could, like, any sport could not compare to that.
I, I remember, um, we, our football team actually made it for the first time to the semifinals, or to the finals, I guess, for football. And I'll tell you, the robotics competitions were way louder. Um, and during the final match, because we were one-to-one tied, um, me and my friend Grace were sitting there and we were like grabbing each other like, what's going, what's happening, like freaking out. And so there was this recorder down there and he was recording, um, I think it was either the Thunder Chickens or the Netherlands team, I don't know which one. But he kept bringing his camera down at us. And like, he'd be here for a second, then he'd come down here because we're just like grabbing each other. So, it's intense. It's pretty cool though.
Yeah, it's awesome. You get to meet people from all over the world. It's people from Hawaii, people from Europe. It's amazing.
Tell us, um, tell us what states the national leader in robotics?
Michigan.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. We passed California a couple of years ago.
We were tied with California for a little bit, or at least head-to-head, but Michigan's taking the air.
California's a little bit better, bigger than we are.
Yeah, just a little.
I'd say, don't we have over 500 teams?
Right. And, and think about how extraordinary that is, given how big, um, California is geographically. So, Michigan, a, um, a national leader in robotics. And that's done with statewide leadership, um, and, and local leadership as well. So, all of those local coaches, those local sponsors, the parents who are helping drive, um, the kids, the engineer parents who are giving their engineer kids enough space to become engineers, um, without them even noticing it. And, and kids who are using this as the opportunity to be first-generation high school graduates, high school, college-going students, high, uh, college graduates, um, and, 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 and. Um, it'll be interesting to see where all of you are in 10 years. Um, in part as a function of robotics, in part as a function of all the great opportunities you've had. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Few?
Thank you all for coming. And this is really exciting and it's, uh, refreshing to see you all, um, and enjoying this. And, and as Dr. Rice has mentioned, the opportunities that are before you. Uh, are you all seeing the diversity growing, um, in, in the area? And if you could talk about that, just here in Michigan, uh, what are you seeing?
Do you want to start? Yeah, you can start.
Yeah, we've had more, like, well, you know, I haven't seen many Hispanics in, but I've seen like a lot of more, like, we are, our population's more African-American in our group. So, we've just seen, seen more people. I don't know about the other teams, though.
Yeah, same with us. Uh, most of our students are from two, uh, like math and science feeder programs. So, as those get more diverse, our school, I mean, our team is of course getting even more diverse. We're trying to pull in people from everywhere across our area as well.
Um, I'd also say on our team, um, we're diverse in this, um, in the sense also of like the different teams and the, like, the genders involved.
Yeah, so I would say a lot more females are joining robotics. And a lot of colleges also go and scout our competitions. And they want more females in the engineering field, so they, we get a lot of attention. I've had people from MIT come up to me after I'm done presenting and want, want us to apply to their schools. So that's just another way that we're also becoming more diverse in the engineering fields by adding more females into it.
And that's not to say like there haven't been struggles where like, one year it might not have been as diverse or, uh, like, we haven't hit like bumps in the road. But still, like, every year it's gotten for great, like, exponentially better.
And I'd say, um, like, in the past two years, um, our team has grown in the leadership skills of the women involved as well. Um, like, I'm the first female co-captain. And we have, like, 50% of our team for the business side is women. And, um, and we have, I think, four leadership positions held by women, which, there was only one last year. So it was awesome to see that.
Yeah, I like seeing us in like up there, you know?
Yeah. It's more comforting.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other, uh, any other thoughts from board members? Thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you so much.
Have a nice day.
The next item on the committee of the whole agenda is presentation of the 2009. The next item on the committee of the whole agenda is presentation of the 2019-2020 Milken Award winner, Nick Peruski, coordinator of the Career and Technical Education Department at Lakeland High School in Huron Valley Schools. He's a 2019-2020 recipient of the Milken Educator Award. Dr. Judy Pritchett and I had the pleasure of participating in the surprise award ceremony on December 6th. Mr. Peruski is one of 40 educators nationwide to win this prestigious award this year. The Michigan Award winner for the year, and he is joining us today. This presentational is informational and requires no board action here. To present to us, Dr. Vanessa Kiesler, Ms. Leah Breen, Director of the Office of Educator Excellence, and Ms. Jennifer Roble, the Manager of the Recruitment and Recognition Unit in the Office of Educator Excellence. Ladies, good morning. Mr. Peruski, good morning.
Morning. Thank you for having us again for the second month in a row. I'll do a little Milken spiel and then we'll watch a video. Then we'll introduce everybody behind me. For 30 years, the Milken Educator Awards, an initiative of the Milken Family Foundation, have rewarded and inspired excellence in the world of education by honoring top educators around the country with $25,000 of unrestricted awards. The Milken Educator Award targets early to mid-career education professionals for their already impressive achievements and more significantly, for the promise of what they will accomplish in the future. Recipients are caught by surprise when their names are announced at an all-school assembly in front of cheering students, proud colleagues, distinguished officials, and the media. On December 6th, Mr. Nick Peruski was surprised with a 2019 Milken Educator Award. Mr. Peruski is a teacher and coordinator of Lakeland CTE Department. Mr. Peruski is committed to preparing students to thrive in the working world and a strong advocate for non-college alternatives. In his previous role, leading the math department and nearby Muir Middle School, Mr. Peruski advocated for and piloted standards-based grading, now used throughout the building. A respected teacher leader, Mr. Peruski mentors new teachers and coaches, veterans. He participated in the Galileo Leadership Consortium, taught at China's University of Science and Technology in Beijing, where he developed a curriculum for an international school, and presented at an international conference in Lithuania. A deep believer in equality and respect for all students, Mr. Peruski also advises Link, Lakeland Student Peer Mentoring Program. Now let's watch the video.
There's cameras in front of me right now. This is all very surreal. I just wanted to call and let you know.
Awesome. Congratulations. What does that mean?
I'm going to a conference in March, I was told, and and there's a cash prize. Yeah.
So, the cash prize?
$25,000.
For you or?
So we'll give credit to Chelsea Martinez on my staff for putting that together.
Very nice.
Nick is here today with his husband, Adam Targansky, Huron Valley School Superintendent, Dr. Paul Sala, John Tavernier, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching, Learning, and Technology, Paul Gamilan, Principal, Lakeland High School, Patricia Rayner, President of the Huron Valley Education Association, Lori and Gerald, Nick's parents, and Rita Karowski, Nick's grandmother. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Nick Peruski.
Sure. Well, I would love to thank you all for this opportunity. The past month has been very surreal and I'm still processing everything, but I'd like to to thank the representatives that I had that came to to support me in this endeavor. Obviously, being awarded that cash prize is really exciting and I'm honored to be able to to do great things and continue my education with it. But also I'm excited to have the elevated platform to be able to advocate for things that I'm passionate about. As you mentioned, I think career and technical education is just so important and it provides students with numerous opportunities and kind of proves the fact that one-size-fits-all model isn't necessarily what works for students across the country. And so I'm just excited that I'm able to provide different opportunities for our students, get them in businesses with work-based learning and and allow them to earn credentials while they're still in high school, recognizing that some students move on to to attend a four-year institution and others don't. And that's okay. And we need to to promote the fact that it's okay to not necessarily go to college, that you can have a successful career as an adult, doing whatever you're passionate about. So I'm excited for, again, for this opportunity and I thank you all for for this honor. It's amazing.
Before you go, I do not have $25,000. I wish that I did, but unfortunately, I do have this, which is a small token of the award that you've received and our gratitude for everything you do for students. Move your body just a little bit. I can't see your darling husband. There we are.
Dr. Rice and board members, once again, it was my pleasure to work on this initiative for educator recognition. And I want to thank you and my staff and Director Breen and Dr. Kiesler for their support. And one quick note, I forgot to thank Deputy Superintendent Garant for last month for doing what he did when I was here at the table last month, so I just want to say thank you to him for that, for the support.
And Ms. Roble, just a note, the Milken Award, tell us a little bit about how it is related to Michigan Teacher of the Year, because they really are quite separate and distinct.
They are. I can't, it's all confidential, so I can't tell you everything, but there's two different pools of people. And the Teacher of the Year is nominated by whomever, teacher, student, community member. And the talent pool, where we find some Teachers of the Year, but we also put in other teachers for conferences, speaking. Sometimes we pull from them and other times we just go out and find them ourselves.
So Milken is is separate and distinct from its national, Michigan Teacher of the Year is something that that we're responsible for, it's statewide.
Correct.
All right, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate your leadership. Thank you. The next item on the committee of the whole agenda is the presentation on high school programs and data advanced placement in international baccalaureate. This is the latest in a series of presentations to the board regarding Michigan's education progress. This is the last of three related to secondary programs in Michigan and focuses on advanced placement international baccalaureate course-taking in Michigan. The board may recall that in October, it had a presentation on GSRP preschool, and then in November and December followed up with career and technical education, early middle college, and dual enrollment respectively. Dr. Kiesler.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And it is my pleasure to be the third month of this installment of metrics around post-secondary, secondary coursework and follow my colleague, Dr. Kennoschek, at the table on these metrics. So why do these matter? Why does AP course-taking and exam-taking and IB matter? They are two more of the opportunities that provide students with the chance to experience university-level coursework while in high school and also to potentially take a step to earn that college credit while still in high school. So Michigan has, and you've heard about the other ones up until this point, a number of ways for students to experience post-secondary options of all, all kinds while they're still in high school. And it's an important part of helping our students be prepared for their next steps. As Dr. Rice said, the, we've previously talked about career tech, early middle colleges and dual enrollment. Today we'll focus on AP and IB. We do have different types of data on this. We collect data on the courses that districts offer students and where the students enroll, and then how students participate in that course is determined at the local level. So we're going to start first looking at how the number of students enrolled in AP courses has changed over time. So as you can see from this chart, we've seen a a nice increase from about 67,000 back in 2014-15. 67,000 students enrolled in AP courses in six, in 2014-15, up till, up to close to 80,000 in 2018-19, which represents an 18% increase in AP enrollment over four years. So more Michigan students are having this opportunity while in high school. We break that down by different student groups. We see that that there were percent increases, double-digit percent increases in all the groups, but the largest increases were in the Hispanic Latino population with a 63% increase and then 39% increase for economically disadvantaged students. And we'll talk a little bit more about this later, but Michigan, over the past several years, has invested in a test fee waiver for low-income students. And so that has been one policy mechanism. We appreciate the support and partnership of the legislature and governor over multiple legislatures and governors to invest in that important, removing that barrier for students to to have access to taking the test that goes along with these courses. Looking at international baccalaureate courses, this number has also risen from about 7,000 students having access to international baccalaureate courses in 2014-15 to nearly 13,000 in 2018-19, which is a 78% increase in IB enrollment over the four years. And again, when we break this down by student group, large double-digit increases, percent increases for all student groups, the biggest percent increase for students with an IEP, although the raw number is is not terribly large, but certainly a big increase there. And then again, economically disadvantaged students and Hispanic Latino students having the next biggest increases. For those of you familiar with international baccalaureate, it's a little bit different than AP. A school has to make kind of a commitment to reshape how they're delivering curriculum in a way that's not quite the same for AP. So as Dr. Rice said about the schools that are, and districts that are doing first robotics, you know, we want to thank the districts for, who are doing this, for their partnership and their vision for expanding these opportunities for students. And then looking at the number of tests receiving credit, again, you are all likely familiar with this, but you can take an AP course or an IB course and not take the test and still have, you know, an excellent rigorous experience. But if you want to take the test and and you do, you can potentially receive credit and receiving credit is in quotes. So the way we think about receiving credit and the AP and IB do as well, is a three or higher on AP and a four or higher on IB. But universities determine how and to what extent credit is awarded, and those do vary by university. So in the last four years, the number of AP tests earning credit has also risen from 34,500-ish in 2014-15 to just over 38,000 last year. That's an 11% increase in the number of students scoring a three or higher on their AP assessment. And then in the IB tests earning credit, that also has increased from about 57,000 to almost 7,000 in the last year, which is a 21% increase in students scoring a four or higher on their IB assessment. And the last fact to share with you, and I mentioned this already, in 2018-19, MDE and Michigan, in partnership with the legislature and the governor, provided funds for 16,955 low-income students to take assessments. That's an increase of 22% from the previous year, and this number has been increasing over time and the investment is increasing. So like I said earlier, that test fee can be a big barrier for many students, so this is a really important part of removing barriers for more equal access for all of our students in Michigan. And in 2018, 670 schools participated in AP exams and 97 colleges accepted AP exam credits. Dr. Rice?
That was one of the more streamlined presentations, Dr. Kiesler, that I have ever heard you give.
Pleasure to do it.
And I imagine it was a pleasure to to do it. Thank you very much for that presentation, that elucidating presentation. Board members, thoughts, comments, questions, fears, phobias, neuroses? Ms. Ramos Montini, Mr. McMillan?
Thank you for the presentation. I am thrilled that the Latino Hispanic students are up in numbers, let's see enrollment of the AP classes at the moment. So that's very promising. Our population is growing and with that, more responsibilities, and this is one that's taking place and I'm really pleased. Now, I have a question. When you use Hispanic, Latino, is it because some people identify themselves with the word Hispano and then another group Latinos? So you have the two?
Yes. So in the way the data are collected is, they have to self-identify as Hispanic, actually. So we don't actually technically collect data on Latino as separate from Hispanic. That's not part of what is collected.
Well, it means the same thing, but some of it, I like to call myself sometimes Hispana or, and some other times Latino, depending on the situation. But in different parts of the country, Latinos, like in Texas, California, and then over here, Hispano. So both are correct, and I'm glad that you put both of them because people identify with different words.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McMillan, Ms. Tilly?
So the idea of a three or a four, what, how many students actually receive college credits, like got the credit?
Um, we.
I've read that, I was looking at, I'm sorry, I was looking at something a little bit older, maybe five or six years old, but said like George Mason University usually requires a six or a seven. So I mean, just exactly what, how, do we know how many?
So I don't have that data readily available because kids go to college all over and all the credit policies differ and how colleges award credit does differ. So, and different colleges, I mean, there's no six or seven score, but some colleges require that you have to get threes or higher on four or more exams to get any credit. Or you don't get credit, you just opt out of, and draw courses. It does vary, so we don't have a good estimate on that.
So broadly to your question, we wanted to keep a a constant standard that we could evaluate longitudinally, that we could evaluate. evaluate longitudinally, that we could evaluate over a period of years. So we chose the three or greater standard, because that's the level at which you begin to get college credit at universities across the country. Although it is true, as Dr. Kiesler points out, that there are, that there are schools that have other standards.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess I would want to know if it's actually beneficial, not just that they get a decent grade, but actually they get something out of it. I mean, that would be, because those judging whether this is actually good or not are the universities, and if they're actually not, then we probably ought to know that as well.
I think, could you, could you share what, what university is among the largest in the country in granting AP credit?
Well, that's a trick question, Dr. Rice.
Well, it's a Michigan University, and it was in the original draft of the, of the presentation. And it was U of M. And so universities across the country have acknowledged that advanced placement participation and success are important indicators of success later in, in college.
Okay. Is there actually studies, because there was a 2004 Geisler and Centellus study that found that AP courses' participation, nor AP exam scores, had any predictive power for students' college GPA or for college persistence. So that was a study that was independent. I'm wondering if there are independent studies. It does, the College Board, who does AP, they happen to say it's wonderful, but that's not independent. So I was just wondering if there's any independent, you know, good studies that actually show there's beneficial, there's benefits.
So we can certainly, with Dr. Rice's, okay, pull together some of the research on this. In general, the research on advanced course-taking shows that it helps students prepare, be prepared and succeed in, in college. And it also, advanced course-taking is more important for low-income students, because they're less likely to have that preparation outside of the school environment. But I, I think you're right, that how AP exactly does interact in the whole trajectory is something that there's definitely research on. I just don't have it at the tip of my fingers.
And then mere enrollment doesn't necessarily, I mean, enrollment could go up, and then, but then, these kids are actually going into something, maybe they, you know, there's, there's always a cost-benefit. I mean, maybe they should be actually, some of them in areas of remediation, or maybe some, or also resources. I mean, as a school devotes resources here, they're taking away resources somewhere else. And so I'm not saying that kids taking AP need remediation. I'm saying that maybe in some other areas, they may need to be focusing, and if, if, just because they're enrolling, they're not finishing, they're not doing well on the test, I mean, I would say that that's actually not beneficial. It might be harmful to increase enrollment in areas where they're not actually getting any benefit, and maybe harm. So I don't know that enrollment is a good number to be looking at. You know, I just, you know, I guess we just need to realize that, that thing, you know, adding something means you're subtracting from somewhere else. And so, you know, what is the cost-benefit of this? And then finally, as far as IB, I mean, I know people that start whole schools, private schools, because one school is going towards IB because of the whole, you know, global citizenship, and it's a curriculum that's not designed in the United States, and it's really, it kind of downplays any exceptionalism from the United States. And, I mean, these are all generalities, I understand, but there is also concern about the IB program. I think that's pretty well-known as well. But I mean, I'm glad, you know, local control, let people decide themselves, but I think that there are some concerns.
Fair enough. Thank you. Ms. Tilly?
I was looking at enrollment as well. I'm glad that enrollment has increased for the subgroup, some significantly, others not so significantly. I think it's a perfect example of the achievement gap. And I think that it's a little skewed with the fact that a lot of them are, for the economically disadvantaged ones, a lot of that I'm sure is repetitive, because the other groups are falling into that as well. But the overall numbers are slightly decreasing. Just, do you know what the factors are for that?
Honestly, no. I mean, it's just a little bit of a decrease. It might be just a cohort thing. It might be that this particular class where this was measured, kind of to Mr. McMillan's point, maybe this particular class was more focused on CTE options, or dual enrollment, or, you know, they might have done, that's why we have the eight different options for post-secondary pieces while in high school, and really encouraging us as a state to have kids selecting the one or ones that fit with their goals. So AP isn't right for everybody, and CTE isn't right for everybody, and early middle college, you know. So we don't, we haven't done research into it, but it, it could be just normal variation, or it could be that this year, kids are more, they're less focused on AP, and they want to do something else.
AP and IB have both declined.
If I could, we, we, we look at data over a period of years, because oftentimes there are small changes year to year that mask a larger trend. So AP is up 14% over a four-year period of time, off slightly in the last year, but we're declining as a state in enrollment by 10,000 kids a year. So from a percentage perspective, this may actually still be an increase year to year. But over a four-year period of time, a 14 percentage point increase is a significant increase in any phenomenon. And if you look at all of the different groups, they're all up in double digits, which I think is really to the credit of local school districts, pushing our young people to reach higher in their, in their coursework and their, and their rigor. And so I think that there's some, some value to it. I wouldn't read into any single year, an enormous amount. I'm suspicious of one-year trends.
I thought about the decline in, in the student population overall as well. Just wondering, did you guys know what the factors were? Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Dr. Pugh?
My question is to, also looking at the particular student groups, and again, it's good to see that the numbers are going up and the percentages are going up overall. I'm just wondering why the African-American students were coupled with two or more races.
Yeah, I can speak to that. That there was a census change in 2010 to create the two or more races category, and what districts across the state and across the country found was that African-American percentages dropped, two or more races increased, that when you summed the two categories, you got roughly what you had previous to there being but one category, but the African-American category. So to look at just the African-American category with the presence of that second category, you see a diminution in numbers that's unrelated to a decline in young people taking any particular course or courses. It's just a function of them identifying themselves, their parents identifying themselves differently with school registrars.
And I'm familiar with, with that, the issues that that causes, looking from year to year. I guess I still have to think about that, though, you know, when you, I would still like to know.
I'll give you an example. So, so my old district was 48% African-American when I started. It dropped by nine percentage points over a period of time. But the two or more races category was created, and it inflated from 4% to 6% to 9%. When you summed the two, the two categories, you got roughly what you had in 2007, that there were the same kids being identified by their parents in different ways, because they had a different choice to identify in a different way.
I'll think about that. But I do, I do understand the issues, but I guess I, I would still want to know.
The African-American.
Yeah.
The raw numbers.
Yeah. I mean, because I would hate to be two or more races and identify as white, too. I don't, you know, so.
Understand, yeah. No, I understand. It ends up being a, a personal choice, a family-by-family choice, and as you know, it ends up being, you know, people have lots of feelings about it.
And just looking at the trends, well, anyway, I get it. It's difficult, but.
Other, other thoughts, questions? We can certainly break those out for you. We have no, no issues with breaking those out. We can break out the, the larger population in the state and show you the phenomenon I'm talking about, but also the, the AP data as well. Ms. Vekto?
Yeah, and just a couple of things I was going to say. I mean, there, there are people who are, you know, two or more races, but they might be Asian and, you know, white or Asian and something, you know, not necessarily African-American, too. So although I don't know how many.
It's imperfect.
Yes, it's imperfect.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to understand, so I'm, I'm, there's a lot I need to learn about the, the IB program, and I appreciate the alternative perspective, which I haven't heard. But I'm curious about the cost and the process to make a school, and then the, like, the benefits. I just, is it that the curriculum is more rigorous? Is it that it, you're saying it's, the curriculum is somehow like an international perspective instead of a American-centric?
Do you want to, do you want to share on IB, or?
I would, I have a couple of things to say. I would love to follow up in writing with more detail, because I do not claim to be an international baccalaureate expert, and most of it's come from school visits that I've seen. So I, again, I think there will be more detail. But my understanding is there are standards that the IB program expects that your curriculum meet, but you actually craft it locally with your teachers and students, and there has to be buy-in from the community. I'm looking at people who might know, so give me the, like, shut-up sign if I go wrong on anything. And there is an emphasis on being a global citizen and the international aspect of it, and that is attractive to a, a number of schools and communities, that, you know, there's maybe a downside to that, too. But that there is a local buy-in to what the curriculum is. It has to just be approved by IB, I believe, as meeting their standards, and then students progress through it. It's a more hands-on, a more integrated and collaborative curriculum. Dr. Rice, or anybody else who wants to add anything about your understanding?
Ms. Lawrie, would you like to share additionally?
We don't have IB in Rochester, but we have lots of AP classes, and that's, that's exactly how it's always been described to me. It's a, it's a whole district undertaking, as opposed to AP classes, where you choose to take this class, or this class, or this class.
And there is, there is IB that begins at the high school level, and then there's IB that begins earlier. I was in a district recently with an IB that's beginning in the middle school and coursing up, and, you know, there's conversation about bringing it to elementary up through high school. AP is different. It's course by course, school by school. IB is school by school. I assume that there's a, somewhere an IB district, but typically it is a school by school initiative supported by the district. In all of these cases, though, important to understand for the board, that these are local decisions. These are not state decisions. We're not imposing AP on local schools and school districts. We're not imposing IB. But we do acknowledge the rigor in each, and we do acknowledge the value of each. In some cases, that rigor helps kids who are going to college go with additional preparation and additional credits. In other cases, that rigor helps young people experience the rigor and understand that they are capable of college now in high school. And if they're capable of college now in high school, they're capable of college later, too. And that's an aha moment. That's one of those, that's an Arsenio Hall moment. That's one of those things that make you go, hmm. And for a young person who wasn't necessarily thinking about college, that can be a game-changer. Some people have said it really turns on how well you do in the AP course. It's certainly good to do well in, in any course, AP or otherwise. But there is some research, and there's some sentiment, that taking a tougher course, not necessarily doing well initially in that tougher course, but experiencing it and realizing what it is to play at that higher level, to, to work at that higher level, makes you more capable the second time around and the third time around. I think it is, it's an enormous success story, that not only are we increasing AP and IB participation across the state in a local control state, but that we're doing so in all different groups, economically disadvantaged, African-American, two or more races, Latino, special education.
IEP.
Because as a number of people have, have pointed out, oftentimes, it's simply the opportunity that gives you a chance to strut your stuff, to, to, to ascend academically. Ms. Vekto?
Yeah, I have more. I was going to, but thank you for that. So I'm, I do think having more options and having more rigor and having more, I agree that that is valuable, and that is something good, and I, I do think having a global perspective builds good citizenship and understanding of the world. The, the, so my personal experience was, I was tracked when I went to junior high, and I was tracked into a low C. And it was one teacher, and I was in, and the classes was really easy, but I was with mostly of the, some of the poorest kids in my community, which was not a rich community, Pawtucket, Rhode Island, if you have any knowledge of Pawtucket. But then a teacher said I shouldn't be here, told my mother, and that I really should be in the advanced placement. So I went from that to an advanced placement program. And I found, it was very interesting to me to have the opportunity to see the differences. And, and, you know, I'm sure things have really changed since I was in high school, but what I noticed was that who were in the AP classes were some of the wealthier kids from my community, the ones with the strongest parent advocates, the ones who, and they were smart, they were smart, but they were also, they weren't necess, and not all of them were the richest, but they were the ones who had the parents that really pushed that they get into those programs, and they were, or they were connected to the school board, whatever. So in, those classes were great, they were more rigorous, but they also, it was part of a tracking system. So my question is, so they pulled the kids out, that, you know, I worked with other kids in the other division, I helped kids with their homework, I, we were, you know, so if you, is, how do you stop the tracking of the pulling out the, some of the most, you know, motivated students who might connect and be a support to other students? I mean, I agree with everything you said. I mean, it really helped develop some kids who never, you know, would have gone to college without it. But the cost I saw was that it segregated them into sort of a clique and separated them from the rest of the kids who could have benefited from their participation in another classroom.
Right. So, so it's an important question. There, there are multiple answers to it. One is the presentation of data by different groups and laying bare the, the issue that you raise. Historically, there are groups that have been underrepresented in advanced placement participation. IB aside, because IB has been very, very small for many years and is showing a, an increase, and that's kind of a separate world.
Right.
But AP, for years, has been the province, traditionally, of middle-class whites. That is changing, and it will change more rapidly if we make clear that this is a challenge, that this is not about the capability of individual students to do the work, but rather the opportunities that are made available to them. There has to be tremendous encouragement from teachers and counselors and administrators about the value of advanced placement. You've got to go into the communities and sell it. We doubled AP participation and AP success in two former districts of mine, and I'm talking about the increases being greater in historically underrepresented populations because we sold, we went directly to communities and said, you can do this, this is, this is how, and you begin to peel it back, and you know And you begin to peel it back, and you know you've changed a culture around AP. When kids start saying, when kids start saying to one another, are you taking AP chemistry? Mm-mm. No one mentioned it to me. Well, I am, and if I have to, you have to too. And so, Pam Pugh tells me that I've got to take AP, so I'm taking AP because another student leveraged me into that. You know you've changed a culture when the kids have bought into that. We more than doubled AP participation and success in my old district and tripled it for children of color. But, but you have to go right at the issue, and you can't, you can't, you can't shroud it. You can't talk about it in euphemistic ways. You have to talk about it as economically disadvantaged kids and children of color, historically underrepresented. They're capable. How are we going to boost the numbers?
And let me be clear. When I talked about who I saw in the advanced placement classes, it wasn't necessarily based on race or even, I mean, some of them were the, from the rich side party, but a lot of them, they were the parents. They had parents who pushed and advocated for them, and maybe there's no way to get around that. They had parents who would, had, you know, would make sure, made it an educational priority, would make sure that they got to all the stuff that they needed to do, and made sure their homework was done, and make sure, but, and, and, so, but I see, you know, I think it's, what you're saying is grass, and, I mean, that can be black, white, anybody. It could be rich, poor, anybody. But they had, like, parents who were on it, you know? And the kids who didn't were with me in the scene, even though they were very smart, some very smart kids.
So, two thoughts about that. One, we have to be the advocates for those who have no advocates. That's number one. And number two, children will find our expectations. If you put them on the ceiling, they'll find them. If you put them on the floor, they'll find them. And, and kids know what we think about them as educators, as adults, as, as people who have a little bit of experience. And if they are told implicitly or explicitly that they can't, they won't disappoint us. And if they are told implicitly or explicitly that they can, they will not disappoint us. You are going to hear a presentation from Dr. Kennickneck this afternoon on this very same issue, a little bit of a different, a little bit of a different cast, a little bit of a different slant, but the very same, the very same issue around expectations. Mr. DeGroot shared more poignantly than I can about the power of being judged on your abilities rather than your disabilities. It's a poignant, a poignant day at the State Board meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Other, other board members?
Yeah, just real quick. Thank you. I just wanted to follow up, actually, and I guess when, when Mrs. Fecto mentioned that, appreciate the alternative perspective. I'm always one to give alternative perspectives or not shy away from it. But, you know, there's an Ackerman Canfor-Caldwood 2013 study that showed that non-participants in the AP program had a higher graduation, college graduation rate than AP students who took and failed their AP exams. So, again, merely pushing kids to take and enroll could be harmful. It may not necessarily be good, is all I want to say. And also, just as a side note, you know, IB and AP, you know, there's a lot of teaching to the tests if they're high, they're relatively high stakes to some degree. I mean, you want these kids to pass, and they define their own standards, as was mentioned by somebody today, IB does and AP does. So, it's just, I think, I've, over the last couple of years, I think I've mentioned, or it's been brought to my attention, and I brought it up here, that in AP, the College Board is deciding the standards, and they could, they may or may not align with Michigan's standards. There could be agendas in there, whether it's social studies, whether it's science, there could be various agendas, and so, just something to keep in mind. But again, it, it is locally decided, so that's a, that's a good thing.
Other thoughts from any other board members? Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Other, other thoughts from other board members, going once, twice? Rice, Dr. Kiesler, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item on the committee, the whole agenda, is the presentation on Top 10 &amp; 10 Strategic Education Plan. This presentation focuses on efforts to review and update Michigan's Top 10 &amp; 10 Strategic Education Plan. It includes a review of the current plan, why the current plan is being updated, expected outcomes of the update, and the process and timeline. This informational presentation is one in a series of presentations, and one, more importantly, in a series of discussions that the board will have over the next four months. Presenting to us today are Ms. Sheila Ellis, Chief Deputy Superintendent, and Ms. Kelly Siciliano Carter, Director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Implementation. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Ladies, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Rice. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It truly is a pleasure to be with you this morning to share with you information about Michigan's current Top 10 &amp; 10 Strategic Education Plan, as well as the process to review and update that plan. Our presentation this morning has four components to it. First is to provide you with some background information about Michigan's current Top 10 &amp; 10 Strategic Education Plan. Then we will describe for you why it's important that we review and revise the plan at this time. We'll describe for you some expected outcomes from the review process, and then we will share the review process with you as well as its timeline. It was the late State Superintendent Brian Wiston's vision to create a strategic plan that would allow Michigan to become a top 10 education state. To create that plan, input was gathered from stakeholders from across the state using online portals as well as face-to-face sessions. Comments and suggestions were gathered from a variety of different stakeholder groups, from education partners, from business, civic, and union leaders, as well as individual citizens. Their input was compiled and categorized and analyzed and used to create Michigan's current Top 10 &amp; 10 Strategic Education Plan. That plan contains a vision statement, and the vision statement describes what the education system in Michigan hopes to become. It also includes a mission statement, and that mission statement describes for us why the education system in Michigan exists. There are four guiding principles in the plan, and those principles provide the foundation for the plan. The plan includes seven goals. The seven goals provide the focus for the plan. There are 44 strategies in the plan, and those plans, those strategies are embedded in the plan and help to achieve the goals. What's missing from the plan are metrics. We need metrics in the plan to help us progress, monitor the attainment of the goals, as well as the ability for us to determine whether we are on a trajectory for becoming a top 10 education state. As I mentioned, the, I'm sorry, I didn't mention this. Back in February of 2016, almost four years ago, Michigan's Top 10 &amp; 10 Strategic Education Plan was presented to the State Board of Education. The State Board members reviewed the plan, and they approved the plan. So, the Strategic Education Plan has been in place for four years. During these four years, the plan has not been reviewed or updated. Strategic plans periodically, regularly, are reviewed and revised. It's been four years since we've approved and implemented Michigan's Strategic Education Plan. So, now it is an appropriate time for us to review, revise, and update the plan. The expected outcomes from the review process include a streamlined and focused plan, a plan that is clear and concise in content, contains current and relevant language, is known, and is supported and understood by our education partners and stakeholders, is both directional and aspirational in its focus, and that includes goals as well as metrics, and those metrics are aligned to the goals, and they help us to progress, monitor where we are in reaching those goals, as well as where we are on our trajectory for becoming a top education state. And to share with us this morning the process for reviewing the plan and updating the plan, I would like to introduce to you Ms. Kelly Siciliano Carter, who is the Director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Implementation, who has taken on this responsibility. So, Kelly, welcome.
Thank you, Sheila. So, I'm excited to talk to you today about the four-part process that we're using in the review of the Strategic Education Plan. The four-part process includes interviews, surveys, the monthly State Board of Education meetings, and focus groups. More specifically around interviews, those have been held from November to January. There was a external stakeholder and partner piece of the interviews where we had 22 different stakeholders participate in interviews, from business community members, to legislators, to education stakeholders, to tribal partners. So, we are really pleased to have those 22 interviews within this process. We also held small group interviews with our staff, and it was really important. The MDE staff also contributed within the process. We hold, we held 17 group meetings and had over 262 employees participate, which was an incredibly high number, and we're really pleased that they chose to participate. We also had the opportunity, Dr. Rice and myself, to talk with all eight of you. So, here I am. I know I got to hear you on the other end of the phone, but I really appreciate the opportunity to listen in on those important conversations. So, thank you for participating in the interview process. The next piece is the surveys. Those will run from January to February. I should say survey. It's, it is, I'll talk a little bit about that in a second, but that's the second part of the process. And we use the information that we had gained from all of the interviews to help frame the survey. The next would be the monthly State Board of Education meetings. After Sheila and I present today, Dr. Rice would like an opportunity to have some discussion with you around potential goal areas or other areas on the plan that you might want to discuss. And lastly, we are going to take all the information that we've obtained with the survey and the conversations here to help frame focus groups, which we will hold from March to April. We hope to present an updated plan to the State Board of Education in the late spring, which would be coming to you as a recommendation at that time. So, more specific around the survey, it opened last Thursday. I am excited to say, I'm obsessed with numbers at this point, and I just checked before I walked up here, we have almost 2,100 participants at this time responses. So, very, very excited with that number. It will close on February 7th. Please encourage everyone and anyone to participate. We want to hear from anyone within the education community, and especially those parents, teachers, and then other individuals in the community that want to be involved. So, please share that. It can be easily found on the MDE website, so michigan.gov/MDE. It's right there, easy to find. So, if there's an opportunity for you even to share it on Facebook, please do it. It's there. It seems to be that really easy social media push is a simple way to just share that out on social media. So, and then, as I mentioned, responses will be, from the survey will help shape the State Board of Education and focus group discussions, so. So, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. Mrs. Ellis and I would like to thank you to be able to share with you some of the background related to the current Top 10 Education Plan and the review process we're using as we review and update the plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, handing it back to Dr. Rice.
Thank you, thank you for the overview. Do board members have any questions of either Sheila or Kelly regarding process? Hearing none. Why don't we move, Ms. Ramus, move to you?
I just, I looked through the survey.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to take it, the survey.
Yes.
And there's only one recommendation. We have parents on there, but we don't have guardians, and we don't have grandparents because the students don't all live with parents. They live with grandparents or guardians.
It's, it's a good point. It's, it's an amendment, I think, that we could probably, we could probably make. Thank you. Other comments or questions on process before we dig into goals? Hearing none. Why don't you, why don't you stay with us for, for, for the conversation? Goal areas. Board members, you, you've had some opportunity to reflect, not simply in the phone conversations that we had that helped shape the survey, but also prior to that, October, November, December, January, you've been privy to data sets about how we're doing in particular areas. You've seen how we're doing, not simply on national data sets, but statewide data sets. We've looked at GSRP, we've looked at NAEP, we've looked at CTE, early middle college, Doolin Room, and APIB. You've shared your preliminary thoughts about what goal areas might be. What do you care to share as possible goal areas today for a state strategic education plan, recognizing we're not talking about a plan for the board or for the department, but rather for what we want for 1.5 million public school children in 842 LEAs in the state of Michigan? President Elbridge?
So, I will start. One of the recommendations that I made is that we need to get past this idea that achievement is limited to math and English language arts. I understand that's what the feds want us to measure, but I think there's so much more to education, as we saw actually today with the students that came and visited us. So, one of the examples that I had was civics. We need to ensure if we're going to maintain our democracy slash republic that we have citizens who understand how their government works and what role they play in their government, and how things get changed and bills get made, and, and I think all of that is really, really important, and we need to find a way to figure out how we can make that a priority without it becoming, again, something that is focused on a test, but something that is more of a lifelong endeavor to understand the, the community that you live in. So, that was one of my recommendations.
All right. Thank you very much. Board, we can, we can reflect probably most positively by sharing initial thoughts rather than necessarily pinballing off of one another. If you'd like to do that, you can certainly do that. But rather sharing your initial reflections on what ought to be in a state strategic education plan. So, it's more brainstorming at this point rather than a winnowing down at, at this point. Ms. Tilly?
Expanding ECE, and understanding that literacy is not just reading, it's also math, it's also the financial literacy component that we, we need to implement.
Ms. Fecto?
Yeah, I, I certainly think everyone should be able to read and to do, you know, have the basic skills they need to be productive as adults, and definitely, and that's, it's a given. But, but I, I'm trying to get at how to make the kind of, Cassandra said, a more holistic approach where we really produce students that are confident, identify their own abilities, have the opportunity to explore what their talents are, kind of what Xavier said in some ways, but for everyone. So, and I also want to make sure that the outcomes for, especially those that might have disabilities, cognitive disabilities, are so dismal right now in, you know, the unemployment rate for, like, people with autism, it's something 90%, even though they might have high IQs, you know? There's, so, I think preparing all students to be, you know, successful There's, so, I think preparing all students to be successful in life, whatever they may choose, but paying, but not overlooking and glossing over the students that need the most help. So, I want to make sure that there's some way to, you know, encourage or reward or uphold up schools and teachers that are focusing on this group and are including, even though there's a disincentive, given that everything's about a test score. So, I would like to have some way to look at those students and make sure that they're having every shot as well, every chance, have high expectations as well.
Thank you very much. Dr. Pritchett.
All of this that we're talking about has to be supported equitably. So, as I'm able to visit schools across the state, one of the things that becomes very, very clear to me is the equitable funding issue. And I know it's a monster, and I realize that we don't have direct control, but I think we would be remiss not to acknowledge the fact that we've got to begin to demand that we look at that as a state, instead of this passing the buck or, okay, we'll mandate it this year, because there's been too many times when I walk into one school and I see peeling paint, and I walk into another school, and just because of the community in which it's placed, there are opportunities for children that there are not in the school that I just walked out of. And so, that is something that I continue to talk about as far as opportunities. Certainly, the first robotics, I think, is a good example of that. That should be available to any student here in the state of Michigan. And I realize that when we get into remote areas of the state, the Upper Peninsula, et cetera, it becomes a little bit more challenging. But it does get down to opportunities, and whether we like it or not, it gets down to finances, on who's going to be able to support teams to be able to have those opportunities. So, I want to put that out on the table, that we need to constantly be aware of the fact that we've got to be able to leverage that for our communities at this point.
So, I don't want to put words into anybody's mouth, but I also want to understand clearly what I'm hearing. Your initial example about peeling paint was simply that. It was an example within a broader topic or rubric of equity or equal opportunity.
Right.
Yeah, okay. And so, that includes the physical, but expands beyond that to the academic and, and, and?
Yes. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much. Dr. Pugh.
So, building on what you just said. So, you know, speaking of peeling paint, looking at not just the outcomes, and not be so outcome-driven, but look at what are some of the drivers of these outcomes that we have to look at. So, looking at the health, both the physical health, social emotional health of students, and how that may drive outcomes. So, whether we're looking at children who are exposed to neurotoxins, children who are exposed to, who have asthma or are exposed to things that drive or exacerbate asthma, looking at the traumatic experiences. And I know that these things are maybe things that we're not used to measuring, but, you know, how do we begin to assess not only what is the occurrence and incident of these issues, but also how are, what are the processes, measuring the processes that are being put in place? There's been a lot of talk recently about teachers not being able, not being equipped to deal with children who have traumatic experiences. I think there were some really good articles about students that were returning from the Christmas or the, I should say, the holidays and having different experiences, and how do we deal with that? I also am one who looks at, how do we close, how do we address achievement overall by addressing those that are the outliers or those that we are seeing that are struggling the most? And so, I don't, I don't think, at one time, I think initially there was some, there was a goal around African-American males in particular. And I don't think that we have, our achievement has been good in that area. And so, I would really like to look at putting that, again, as a goal. Then the other, shaping some goal around that, around that population. And then educators. I think looking at our educators, and why is it that we are seeing some school districts in particular, especially, that have a crisis as it relates to being able to retain as well as attract educators? But, and I see that as a driver of some of the outcomes that we've put a lot of emphasis on. So, I think that that was like three things that I mentioned there.
So, again, not to put words into anybody's mouth, but to just seek to clarify, because you and I've had some of this conversation. This is part of the upstream issue, not so much the downstream, but rather the upstream. What are kids experiencing coming into schools that are affecting their capability of being successful in schools? And how can we mitigate those adverse impacts, those adverse experiences? Is that right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. And let me just say, to Dr. Pritchett's point, is also looking at the school, I mean, itself, I mean, especially the environment. And of course, there's so many drivers as to why some environments are more deplorable than others for some students.
But kids realize what the environments are?
Absolutely.
They, they can tell. You don't have to be full-grown to understand when an environment is less than or substandard or not what it.
And feel less prioritized, or less of a priority.
Yes. So, physical health, mental health, which is huge, from the perspective of both our young people and from the perspective of the people who serve our young people. I heard African-American males and African-American male student achievement, and I heard a look at our teaching profession. All right, very good. Ms. Snyder, thank you, Dr. Pugh.
A suggestion, our National Teacher of the Year Rodney Robinson is exactly that. He's a male African-American educator. His platform is trauma, environment, and schools. Just getting to hear him speak at NASB was very, it was a very good speech, I think. I don't know if you could, like, bring him in, or somehow there's a way that in this area, as you're exploring, you could draw off of his experience, and he was just really motivating as well.
Thank you. And I hear, I hear that as an amen on the, on the mental health side particularly, that that's an important area. It's a growing area. It's a growing area of concern with our young people and with our staff. And so, I hear that as an amen for focus on that. All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Ms. Lahey.
Actually, our Regional Teacher of the Year is here with us, and she would like to say something.
Yeah, I would just like to bring back on exactly what you guys are saying.
Yes.
This is something that I'm really passionate about. I'm coming from an elementary perspective, and it appears to me right now that kids coming in with a lack of health, social health, mental health, is really, I consider a crisis at this point. And I'm wondering how do we measure, like you were saying, how do we measure success on academics when we might have to be addressing those other areas? And what does that look like if kids make massive growth in their emotional health, but maybe their academics don't rise as much, because that has to be addressed first?
It's a good point. And I think our educators, for obvious reasons, are more aware of what's going on with our children and families than perhaps non-educators are, because they're interfacing with, interacting with on a day-to-day basis.
And you've been in the field for a while, you've seen the change. This is my 18 years, so compared to where I started and today, there has been a significant change of people. And I didn't have to teach that before, because it was one here, one there, but not six in a classroom of 18. The overall teaching.
It's a good, it's a good point. What we're hearing is that this is not a phenomenon that is isolated to a particular type of school. Urban schools, rural schools, suburban schools are all affected. Dr. Pugh.
Let me just add, and happy that you said that, because I do believe that there are particular schools. I think that there are whole districts of schools, particular school districts that are usually in urban districts, who could be totally unnoticed, because you have educators that are having to deal with those foundational emergency, day-to-day issues. I do disagree. I do agree that it is across the board, but I think that there is such an urgency in specific school districts, and we're definitely feeling it by educators feeling that they're not appreciated, they're drained, they're not, they're not supported, they're not undergirded, they're not financially, they don't even have, they're not provided with the resources to address it, but then also are overtaxed in a way that it's detrimental to their health and well, their own health and well-being. And I do believe that particular school districts are experiencing this at a higher rate than other districts.
Hearing none. Thank you. Other board members' thoughts on potential goal areas? Mr. McMillan.
I will acknowledge, it's a little bit unusual to be looking at, for me, state strategic education plan when I am a strong advocate for local control. So, for us to say that we want to see this happen, yet we, I don't want us to be mandating or doing top-down, but we can certainly foster, I guess, things. And certainly, I agree with Cassandra with broadening the curriculum. I personally think this can be achieved, one way is by reducing the number of standards that we have to more essential standards and giving more leeway at the local level. I would say that, you know, from what the state should be doing, and I've talked about this before, is things where the incentives are backwards potentially, like special ed is something that, you know, we should be trying to advocate for and make sure that, I don't know, I don't know how you measure it, maybe parents of special ed students are their satisfaction, and trying to increase that, and students in those programs. And also in the area of failing schools, or quote-unquote failing schools, and exactly what those are. But, I mean, there are certainly areas that students are not getting a reasonable education, and those are areas, I think, fall under our purview, and we should have within a plan. We talked on the phone, and it is difficult to come up with metrics. I, you know, I'd like to see parent satisfaction in the state increase. I'd like to see student satisfaction in the state increase, district satisfaction, and then teacher satisfaction increase. And we talked about joy, you know, so how do you measure? But I'd love to see the joy in teaching and the joy in learning from students, the joy in teaching by teachers increase as a strategic, part of the strategic plan that we have that would potentially fall under our purview, or at least try to influence those areas. And then I would be remiss, also, I agree with reading. I mean, with something as basic as just making sure, not by a certain time or they get held back or anything, but just making sure that kids can read and read well and think well, and that they can explore their talents and passions, like Michelle said. And then, finally, I'd be remiss if I don't mention Young Zhao, but I would say if there's a way to, to measure whether or not we are killing creativity less successfully next year than this year, because he points that as the reason why the U.S. has been so successful compared to other countries, even though we do, don't do very well on international exams, it's because we kill creativity less successfully. So, if we can do a better job at being less successful at killing creativity, that would be a good strategic, part of the strategic education plan, in my opinion.
It is rare that I'm just stopped.
So, measure that.
That may, that may be a, that may be a moment. Everything, contrary to some quantitative folks' feeling about the world, everything isn't measurable, and some really important things are hard to measure. But that doesn't mean that they're less valuable. It just means they don't necessarily fit into the same way of thinking about a world. And the board's going to have to figure out what mix of the measurable and the immeasurable it wants to speak to in a strategic education plan. In all seriousness, there are things that are measurable that are meaningless, and there are things that are well-nigh immeasurable that are very important. And I think the board would do well to reflect upon that. That's not an endorsement of measuring nothing. I want to be clear about that. I believe in measuring to generate progress, but I don't think, nor do I think anybody else thinks, that simply because you can measure it means that it has value.
Right. And if I can add to that, I mean, that's a great point. I've heard it, I don't know if it's Young Zhao or others, it said, "We have gotten to where we are with high-stakes testing," and say, because certain things are easy to measure, so we just kind of gravitate towards that as success. But that means that we're gravitating away from things that may be more important, but they're not as measurable. And so, yeah, we fall, so I, yeah, when we talked on the phone, I'm a little bit leery of saying, okay, these are our top priorities, because then we're going to start measuring them, and then those end up being potentially the things that are only important, and then other stuff aren't so.
It's a good, it's a good point. I would simply say that you balance some goals with other goals. You balance some activities with others. We were, we just experienced this morning, apart from the presentation on AP and IB, which I thought was elucidating, we had a presentation from Xavier Degroot, we had a presentation from our robotics young people, measuring, we can certainly measure participation in robotics, but our young people really shared what it meant for their sense of efficacy, capability, and, and, and. It's really hard to measure what it is from a life-changing perspective, to be going down one road and then to pivot and to say, wow, I realize that I'm capable of so much more as a function of this robotics activity. So, the board really does have to balance between or among different goal areas. Other thoughts on potential goals? Ms. Lahey.
Just to kind of turn to a different subject, our teachers need more support for the workload that is placed on them. And I, I don't, I don't know how to properly really convey, because it's different in all different parts all over the state, but we have teachers teaching at the high school level, six, seven different things a day. We have teachers with 38, 40 kids in a class, sometimes higher. We don't have, we don't have the proper mentorship or coaching available to teachers, because it's expensive to pull one teacher out of, Tricia is an instructional coach, to pull an instructional coach out, and then that person's not teaching, and you still have to pay. So, I think there needs to be some, some kind of tangible support for the actual work being done by the teachers, the counselors, the educators, because we're drowning and we're losing people, and we're losing really good people, or we're losing people who have the potential to be really good if they had more supports in their first few years, because the first few years are rough for everybody. And Tricia and I both work a lot with young teachers, and we just see there's so much potential, but the way that our schools are designed kind of suck the potential out of them, just like sometimes they suck the potential out of our students. I still love teaching. I'm going back next year, but I'm not staying there for I'm going back next year, but I'm not staying there forever. I maybe have five years, maybe a few more, and I don't know who's going to be there to replace me. So it's just, it weighs on my mind a lot what our teachers are going through in the classrooms.
So I hear that as an endorsement of a goal that focuses on teacher support, teacher uplifting, teacher care--
Your pay.
In a fashion. Understood.
Yeah.
But I hear it being broader than that as well. So, you know, you bring me into the profession, don't just bring me in, give me keys and say best of luck, but walk with me over those first few years, which can be really brutal for, for a lot of-- I know some brilliant teachers who aren't brilliant when they walk into a classroom. Most of us aren't. Most of us are learning and it's humbling to be in front of 25, 30, 35 little ones, each of whom seems to have an opinion about how we're teaching. So I appreciate you sharing that. Thank you. Other, other thoughts on potential goal areas from, from board?
Okay.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ramos, Montini, Ms. Fecto.
Well, now that we have heard from a teacher, or two teachers, that was one of the top goals that I discussed with you, because during the holidays, different teachers called me to tell me how depressed they were, how demoralized they were, how many teachers are under doctor's care, mental health care, antidepressants. And it really said a lot to me. We can have all the programs and we can ask for all the training and we can have all these things, but if the teacher is not showing good about who she or he is, none of these programs happen. And we can say teachers need training for this, 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 that, but a teacher is only one person. Now, we talk about all of these things, but in many instances, teacher shortage is a big problem because a lot of things are happening because of teacher shortage. When there's no teachers for this room, then this class gets divided into those teachers and then that, that, those teachers have classes up to 50 students. We talk about 25, no. That's, that's the reality in the, in the schools where proposal A has given them a lot of, a good funding. And so there's a teacher shortage and so that's causing a lot of the ripple effects on, on the mental stage of teachers and feeling unappreciated, disrespected. There's, they just told me so many things and so when we, we talked, that was one of the top goals that I think we should work on, teacher retention. We have to widen the field. Very few are going into the field. African-American and Hispanic teachers are, they're just not there. They're not going into that field. And nobody is at this point, because they hear all these stories. And so, again, we can, we can talk about so many different things that we want to happen, but we don't have the teachers to do it. Not going to happen.
So, again, not to put words into anyone's mouth, but just to clarify, I hear you talking not only about causes of the teacher shortage, but the impacts of the teacher shortage and looking at what's upstream and what's affecting downstream. So you have a vacancy. It's not an isolated vacancy. It doesn't solely affect the children in a given class. It ripples through a building, right? Because Marilyn leaves and now I'm covering one of Marilyn's classes and President Albridge is covering one of Marilyn's classes and Dr. Pugh is covering Marilyn's, one of Marilyn's classes and you're covering one of Marilyn's classes. So four or five of us are adversely affected by that because we have no prep period at that point during, during the day. Our kids are adversely affected because we're stretched to a greater extent. The kids who are, who were formerly in Marilyn's class, being taught by this great physics teacher, now being taught by me, a former high school French teacher, which is horrifying when you, when you think about the mismatch in terms of preparation and need. So you're talking about causes of the shortage and then you're talking about the impacts of the shortage.
If I may, one of the reports that I got that, just before the holiday break, winter break, in one building, just in one building, three teachers said, "We're not coming back." Just in one building. My friend at substitutes, she said, "Upe, I stayed one hour, two hours. The third hour said, 'I'm going home,'" and she left. So they're, they're going through a lot of stress. Teachers are going through a lot of stress and it's impacting the whole, you know, here we sit and meet, but over there, where it's happening, is it happening?
It's a good, it's a good point. And your, your point about people going into the field, down 66% in teacher education prep program candidates in the last decade. So that's real. That's not mythic and it's not anecdotal. We're, in terms of that diminution, and this is a national phenomenon, the decline in the profession, and it requires us to rebuild and re-energize and re-honor the profession nationally. But we have a special challenge in the state of Michigan where we've fallen very, very profoundly. Interestingly enough, that we have continued to improve in many ways in terms of our academic results is, at the, is, is in spite of two headwinds. One, the teacher shortage, and two, the disinvestment in public education, inflation-adjusted. That's not my opinion, but it's the research that's been shown where we were 50th of 50 from 95 to 2015 in total revenue growth, inflation-adjusted nationally. So in spite of two headwinds, we continue to improve in our public education. Imagine if we were supporting public school teachers and other educators and support staff more and better, what this might be like. Other thoughts on terms of goals? Ms. Fecto.
And, you know, I'm, I'm an educator, I was an educator at Wayne State, but my wife is an educator, my husband's a teacher, my father was a teacher, my sisters and brothers are teachers, my daughter's now going to be a teacher. So I hear a lot from teachers. And I second what Upe just said, although my daughter doesn't want to hear it and is about to go into teaching. Jeez, it's her passion. But I think, I also see the effect that it's having on higher ed institutions that are having a difficult time maintaining their colleges of education. And so I think we also have to look at how do we support these institutions? How do we make it more, what, what can we do to, a lot of it is financial. These, these teachers go in, they spend higher ed because of the defunding of it by the state. Tuition is higher and higher because the state contribution is lower and lower. And so they come out with these student loan debts and then they take a job for $30,000 and they could have made more if they didn't go to college coming out. I keep telling, over time, it will get better, I promise. But I think a lot of it is financial. If there are ways that we could facilitate tuition waivers or encourage more, these institutions and the people who, to make it more affordable for them. I know a lot of the fees that the state and to take tests to become a teacher have quadrupled, have gone through the roof. I don't see why the department, I mean, I know we need money, but these tests are very expensive and that's something that we control. So I would also, and I think also, I think getting rid of the teacher evaluation program that we have now, I think, I think it's a disastrous program. I think it's a total disincentive. It's, it's not valid, it's not, it's, it's punitive, heavy-handed, and it's a, I think it's a driver for teachers to leave because the evaluation system is, is just not fair. You can't even appeal the decisions, except to the superintendent who might not like you. If the superintendent doesn't like you, then you're cooked. And so the whole evaluation system, I see as an unfair process and, and I would have as a goal to get rid of it personally. I, so, and a measure could be, you know, reducing the number of teachers on Valium. I second--
I'm not sure we have access to all that, that data, but I do--
And I think all of this takes money. I mean, it just takes money and that is not available now for a variety of different, the infrastructure, you know, the way we do, raise money for school infrastructure is flawed. We need to, that's why poor districts are peeling paint and that's just a minor thing compared to, I mean, the differences in their structures has, we need to really push to get a fair system that, so everybody can get that goal that we talk about, you know, the same opportunities or, and across the state. So I think, I guess, around teacher support, I think it's, we have to raise the salary, we have to raise their benefits, we have to raise the, we have to support the institutions, we have to make it also incentivize substitute teaching so that they can go to these trainings. We need to reduce class sizes, like they have at Green, whatever, what is that, Green, that fancy school?
Green Hills?
No. Green, what is it?
Hills?
Green Hills. And everywhere elsewhere, you know, they have very small class sizes. I think we need to, to focus on, on those inputs. Lower class sizes, better compensation and support and job security for teachers so that they, we look at turnover rates. We try to reduce the turnover of teachers. We try to increase the longevity of teachers, the valuable teachers who have that years of experience, so.
Thank you very much. Just a point of clarification. You mentioned that the teacher evaluation program should be eliminated. Want to make sure that I understand what you're referring to. You're not saying that teachers ought not to be evaluated.
No, they should.
You're talking about the repeal of a state law associated with teacher evaluation. By the way, there's a related law associated with administrator evaluation. I assume that if you think that the one ought to be repealed, you think that the other ought to be repealed there, in some, some ways, flip sides of the same coin.
I'm sorry, so you're, I'm talking about the one where the, it's based on test score and like a principal coming in for 10 minutes.
Absolutely. And, and the administrators have a parallel evaluation system--
Oh, right, right.
--that, that has, that is currently 40% based on assessment results.
Right.
So, just a point of clarification, you're not saying that teachers and administrators ought not to be evaluated. You're saying that that ought to be a function of local systems rather than a state system.
Right. And it should be an appeal process to ensure that it's fair and, you know, that it's not just biased or, you know, it, it should be a fair system of evaluation. And I don't think that the system that we have now is fair at all.
It's a, it's a, it's a longer conversation that, that we ought to have regarding that, but I appreciate the clarification around it. I think that there are a lot of educators that would argue. I'm talking about the ones who were there before the state law and after the state law, who can attest to the fact that the world isn't better for children as a function of the new state law, but they are spending an enormous amount of time working on their evaluations.
Drives the curriculum, drives the teaching.
But it doesn't necessarily drive student achievement.
Right.
Yeah.
I just have to speak to that too, because it's one of the things that the teachers talked to me about over the holidays. They literally get sick when they're going to be evaluated, literally get sick, and that is a shame. What is the name of the instrument that they're using?
Well, there, there are a number of different evaluation systems that are permissible. I think the, the one to which you may be referring is Charla Danielson.
Yes.
Yes.
The, yes, effective, highly effective, effective and minimally effective. And so they literally get sick. It's, and that, sometimes the evaluator knows lots less than the teacher that's being evaluated. And so those instruments, this one in particular, because I heard the, the person that this instrument was named after say to us, "This is not supposed to be a punitive instrument. It's supposed to be a, a, a measure of improvement for the teacher." But they're using it as a punitive and so this is hurting our profession a lot and this is another reason why the shortage of teachers.
I think that's, I think that's accurate. There's no question about that. It is 12:01 and at the risk of losing my board before I lose my board, let's, let's adjourn, let's reconvene 1 o'clock after lunch. Thank you very much.